Well, good morning and welcome to City Hall. We're going to get started with the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Dr. Randy Faulkner is the pastor at Metropolitan Baptist Church here in Oklahoma City. He's going to lead us in the invocation. Afterwards, I'll ask Councilman Greiner if he'll lead us in the pledge of allegiance. But would everyone please stand?
Let us pray. Gracious God, we come to you through your Holy Son and by your Holy Spirit. It's our prayer that your holy will will be done in this city today. We're glad that we can be quiet for a moment, pray for the peace and prosperity of our city. We want to be careful to give you thanks. We are so grateful for food and shelter, good health, protection. We thank you for our families. We pray for those today who are cold and homeless and hungry, and we pray that you will bless those agencies and ministries that are serving the poor. We pray for your protection and guidance for our public safety officers. Please keep them in your care. We pray for our schools, for our teachers, our children. We pray for those who are charged with planning for the future of our city. And we are so grateful, Father, for the progress that has been made in recent years. We pray for continued wisdom for all the big decisions that are before this council. We pray for your blessings on this meeting. Bless our mayor, our city council, our staff. As your word guides us, Lord, we pray that you will help us to trust in you with all our hearts and not lean on our own understanding, but to acknowledge you in all our ways. And we thank you for the promise that you will make our paths straight. In your holy name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, it may have slipped past everybody, but we are right smack dab in the middle of Oklahoma Heritage Week. And Louise Painter is here. We have a proclamation we're going to put together. Louise, come on up. And I'll ask the clerk to read the proclamation as Louise and I get settled down here.
Whereas the signing of the statehood proclamation on November 16th, 1907, was the most significant action in the history of the state of Oklahoma. Whereas the week of November 16th through 22 has been declared Oklahoma Heritage Week in the state of Oklahoma. Whereas all Oklahomans should pause during this time and reflect on our Oklahoma heritage as well as our national heritage. Oklahoma City has the obligation and privilege to play an important role in the observance of this great week. Now therefore, Mick Cornet, the mayor of the city of Oklahoma City, does hereby declare the week of November 16th through 22nd, 2014, as Oklahoma Heritage Week in Oklahoma City. And he encourages all citizens, families, clubs, churches, businesses, organizations, and schools in Oklahoma City to give personal attention to all special statehood day observances, to fly the Oklahoma State flag and the national colors, and to participate in and sponsor programs, projects, and activities emphasizing the heritage of this great state.
Let's show our appreciation to the state of Oklahoma and to Heritage Week and to Louise. And, you know, it might just be a good time, if you have children in the home, just to talk to them about Oklahoma's history and the fact that we're a fairly new state. And, but we celebrate November 16th, which was two days ago, as Heritage Week because that's when the proclamation, that's when we officially became a state, when President Roosevelt signed the papers. Anything else we can do?
Just remember that it's our birthday and especially celebrate the people of Oklahoma who have caused us to be here and enjoy this great state that we have. And especially here in Oklahoma City, stop a little bit and think about the people who are doing all the hard work to bring you water, electricity, the guys who go out in the middle of the night when your electricity is off, and give thanks to them. This is all part of what makes this a great state. And where else in the country can you enjoy the snowstorm we had yesterday and all the slipping and sliding? And then this morning, roads are all clear, nice. So anyway, it's a great state to live in. And just tell everybody, your neighbors, your friends in other parts of the country, what a great place Oklahoma is. Thank you.
Louise, our best cheerleader. Thank you all very much. Thank you. Every month, the Rotary Club of Oklahoma City helps us honor one teacher in the entire city as our Teacher of the Month. And Betty Shadon is here. Betty, come on up. Betty is a pre-K instructor at Monroe Elementary School. And can you imagine, out of all of the teachers, to have been selected as the Special Teacher of the Month? Betty, thank you so much. We have a resolution. I'll ask the clerk to read it as we get settled.
Whereas Betty Shadon has been named Teacher of the Month by the Foundation for Oklahoma City Public Schools and the Rotary Club of Oklahoma City for November 2014. Whereas Betty Shadon teaches pre-kindergarten for special needs students at Monroe Elementary School. Whereas Betty Shadon was honored as the Monroe Elementary School 2013-14 Building Teacher of the Year. Whereas Betty Shadon was honored as a finalist for the 2014-15 Oklahoma City Public Schools District Teacher of the Year. And whereas Betty Shadon is a National Board Certified Teacher and is an education leader who seeks to inspire, support, and encourage other teachers. Whereas Betty Shadon conducts herself as a consummate professional and dedicates herself to the service of her students. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City that they do hereby recognize and commend Betty Shadon on her selection as November 2014 Teacher of the Month by the Foundation for Oklahoma City Public Schools and the Rotary Club of Oklahoma City.
Let's give Betty a big round of applause. Technically, we have to vote on this. I'll look for a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Betty, they're all green, all green lights. Thank you so much. And I got to speak with Betty for a few minutes today, and she really has a calling. She teaches pre-K kids with special needs. And I can't imagine the challenges that might exert themselves on Debbie.
I'm really honored to be here. Oklahoma City's schools have really terrific teachers. My three kids went through the public school system, and they all have advanced degrees. My son is going to be celebrating his graduation with his doctorate in December from University of Tulsa. They all had great Oklahoma City teachers. This week, my class is learning about the letter O, and Oklahoma is definitely one of our words we're going to be going over. My kids will learn that they live in Oklahoma. Thank you.
Big round of applause. And that's terrific. And on a somewhat somber note, we are losing one of our longest friends down at City Hall. Donna Morris has been working with the library system and running the library system for a long, long time. Donna, why don't you come up? And I think we have several members from your board. If you all would come up and surround her here, we'll have the resolution. And I know there's some library employees here, too. Come on up, and let's honor Donna Morris, who is winding up 45 years, 45 years with the Oklahoma City Metropolitan Library System and the 13 years as Executive Director. We have a resolution. I'll ask the clerk to read it.
Whereas the Metropolitan Library Systems, Donna Morris has provided exemplary service to the residents of Oklahoma City during her 45-year tenure and in her 13-year capacity as Executive Director. Whereas Mrs. Morris has been a strong advocate for libraries across Oklahoma and the nation. She has served as a president of the Oklahoma Library Association, ALA Counselor, Legislative Chair, and in many other OLA capacities, as well as being an active member of the American Library Association and the Public Library Association. Whereas Mrs. Morris, a visionary and respected leader in the community, has been a member of the Downtown Rotary Club, Leadership OKC, the Greater Oklahoma City Chamber of Commerce, and the Oklahoma State Chamber. Whereas Mrs. Morris has been the leading force in the development of two new libraries in Oklahoma City, the Patient S. Lading Northwest Library at 5600 Northwest 122nd Street, which is the first EED certified public library built in Oklahoma, and the Almonte Library at 2914 Southwest 59th Street, as well as playing a pivotal role in the construction and grand opening of the Ronald J. Norick Downtown Library in 2004. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City that they do hereby express sincere appreciation and gratitude to Donna Morris for her dedicated service to the Metropolitan Library System and wish her all the best for a well-deserved retirement.
Let's show our appreciation to Donna. This is for you. And, my goodness. I'm going to hand you the microphone just to, because I want to hear thoughts of a 45-year career in our library system. But, you know, you don't have to look very far to see the results of your work. You have so many challenging, challenges out there and promising young people. And of course, beautiful building right across the street.
Thank you, Mayor, and thanks to the city council for this honor. I wanted to build on what you said about schools. I went to Arthur Elementary, Roosevelt Junior High, and graduated from U.S. Grant. So Oklahoma City Public Schools kind of helped me on the path. I really wanted to commend the city for the partnership that we've had with the library system over the time that I've been director. Many of the city council people and the mayor have really been helpful. Jim Couch, I'm sure he's probably glad I'm gone because I've bugged him quite a bit to get some things done. But it's been a great partnership. We've, the libraries mentioned in here, as well as renovating two of our libraries, Southern Oaks and Ralph Ellison, and we have two more projects in the works to renovate Belle Isle and Capitol Hill. And so we're excited about that. You know, they say that great communities have great libraries, and I would say that you all should be commended for that because I think we have a great community, and part of it is a great library system.
We do have a great library system. And I want to, this, this, this support group here, you know, all got up when we said we want to do something for Donna, they were here. So Donna, I hope you feel the love in the room, and we really appreciate and have valued your service. And we hope you won't be too much of a stranger down here at City Hall and in the libraries.
Maybe a little. Thank you, Mayor.
You bet. Thank you.
Mayor, if I may, just make a comment from both perspectives, being on the city council as well as being a member of the Board of Trustees for the Metropolitan Library System. Donna's leadership really was evident throughout all those years that I was involved with the library system. And anyone who takes on an organization as large as the Metropolitan Library System really has a lot of issues to deal with, and she did just a tremendous job. She has, as we've mentioned, some great particular projects that have been accomplished under her tenure. The, and we go from some extremes, from the downtown library, which is just tremendous, to the Almonte Library, which is almost a storefront-type library. But all of those libraries really do have a tremendous impact on so many people's lives. They really change the courses of many people's lives to be able to have access to the books and other learning materials is so important. And with the Almonte Library, for example, just opening that up brought in hundreds of new members to the library system, and especially the children, and especially those who may not be as well acquainted with our language here, to be able to gain additional understanding through the library is so important, and it helps them, you know, have success in schools and later in their lives, as well as adults, to continue that learning process. So the libraries are truly important. We've got to protect them, support them, and Donna was so critical in the continued growth with the Metropolitan Library. So thank you, Donna.
Mayor, if I could just add my congratulations. Donna, thank you so much for your service. I so appreciate it. We had the privilege of working closely together on a couple of the projects downtown, particularly the Rotary Leaping Waters Fountain that I, to this day, see children playing in that fountain. It's been a real gift to downtown Oklahoma City. And then the placement of our Rotary Buffalo Harris right outside the library, and it's also been enjoyed. But I hope you enjoy these next years. We've just appreciated working with you so very much.
And we do need to pass a resolution honoring Donna that clerk read. All right, cast your votes, and it passed unanimously. Thank you, Donna. All right, we're on the council agenda on item 3, C, D, and E, a series of appointments. I'll look for a motion. All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 3F is a resolution that would approve travel expenses for me to attend the U.S. Conference of Mayors meeting in Washington, D.C. in January. All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 4 is a Journal of Council Proceedings. 4A is to receive the journal for November 4th, and 4B is to approve the journal for October 21st. All right, comments or questions on the journal? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. And item 5 is requests for uncontested continuances.
Mayor, a couple this morning, starting on page 16. Item 9C2, 9C2 on page 16, CE891, the applicant has requested that this item be deferred until the December 2nd council meeting. Moving to page 18, under item 9H1, item B, 4220 North Westminster, unless it be stricken, we need to re-notify. And item F, 4701 Northwest 19th Street, unless it be stricken, we need to re-notify. And then on to page 19, under item 9J1, A 5200 Bodine Drive, unless it be stricken, the owner secured. Item E, 4128 Jones Boulevard, unless it be stricken, the owner has secured. Item N, 113 Southeast 19th Street, unless it be stricken, there's a new owner. Item O, 2301 Northwest 19th Street, unless it be stricken, the owner has secured. Item P, 1926 Northwest 22nd Street, unless it be stricken, the owner has secured. And finally, item V, 1309 Northwest 82nd Street, unless it be stricken, again, the owner has secured.
All right, any other requests for uncontested continuances? All right, we're on to item 6, revocable permits. Our first is item 6A, it's to hold the Holiday River Parade at the Oklahoma River and Regatta Park. Mike McCullough is here. Mike, you want to come up and tell us more about this annual event?
Good morning, Mayor and Council. It's a tough assignment to follow the letter O and 45 years of service, but I'll give it a try. The, this is the 10th anniversary of the River Parade. It was started in 2004. We skipped a year in 2010 because of the construction on the riverfront. But it was started in 2004 for primarily the reason is we didn't have a river before 2004. And so the First River Parade officially opened the river, the MAPS project. And since then, we have, after we pay our expenses from the River Parade each year, we take the funds left over and we put it into a fund, Oklahoma City Community Foundation, called the Oklahoma River Foundation Fund. And I'm proud to report that after doing this event for nine years now, this will be our 10th, of course, that that fund now has over $800,000 in there. And the proceeds from that fund, once we hit the million-dollar mark, I was hoping we'd reach it by now, because I told Norick I'd do 10 years. And so, anyway, I was hoping we'd reach the billion mark by now. But once that does reach a million dollars, the interest from those funds will go to help support other projects, matching funds, improvements on the river and the trails also. So we're excited about what we've accomplished, about putting on a free family holiday event. I do, Mayor, like to mention the sponsors that have been with us, for the major sponsors since we started it, and to recognize them. Bank First, the Chickasaw Nation, the city of Oklahoma City, Oklahoma City Riverfront Redevelopment Authority, and the E.L. and Thelma Gaylord Foundation. In addition, this year, we're adding Air Comfort Solutions as our title sponsor. So we appreciate Air Comfort Solutions coming on board to help us with this, again, a great free family event. Finally, I'll close by saying we're honored to have our former mayor, Andy Coats, as our grand marshal this year. And he had a tough four years as mayor, Mayor Cornet, as you know, during those times. But the one thing that Andy Coats did do was he started the Riverfront Authority, Pete, as you'll recall, which is now the Oklahoma City Riverfront Redevelopment Authority. So we're excited to have former mayor Coats and his family join us Friday, December, or December, November 28th, on the Oklahoma River. It starts at 6:00 P.M. And again, I appreciate the support the city, the council, city manager Couch and all have given us to put this on for 10 years. Thank you.
You bet, Mike. Thank you. And we have a motion in a second. I cast your votes, and it passed unanimously. All right, item 6B is a revocable right-of-way use permit from DG Productions, USA Track and Field Sanction, to hold the OKC Turkey Tracks. And it looks like Kerry?
Rolston.
Rolston.
Yes.
And you are?
Don Garrett, DG Productions, 14420 South Meridian.
Great to have both of you here. Tell us more about the Turkey Tracks.
This is the 5K Run and a One Mile Fun Run that we do. This is our fourth annual. We do every year on Thanksgiving morning, 9:00. We burn calories before we go stuff ourselves. And part of, part of the purpose is to raise funds and toys for the Toys for Tots each year. We work with the U.S. Marine Corps, and they bring a truck, and we try to fill the truck with toys. So, and we've been very successful in the past.
Well?
Expect about 2,000 people.
And they'll be running two different links, you were saying?
Yes, yes. At 8:30, there's a One Mile Fun Run, which is an untimed event, which anyone, hopefully, can participate. And at 9:00, a 5K Run, which is...
Okay, can people sign up on that day?
They can. They can sign up on that day, and they can sign up now at www.dgroadracing.com.
Okay. And 9:00, where will they start? Where will, where will that run?
It'll start right next to the post office and go north there and do a loop and come back to the post office.
Okay. Well, thank you all very much. We appreciate this, and I hope a lot of people will participate.
Great strategy to burn some calories before you have pecan pie. Anyway, I would move approval.
Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Thank you all. And item 6B2 is a request from Stockyard City Main Street to host the Cowboy Christmas Parade, November 29th, down on Exchange Avenue. You must be Emily Allen.
I am. Good morning.
Nice to see you, Emily. Could you tell us more about this event?
Yes, we've held it for at least over 50 years. No one really knows quite when it started, but it's been a long time. So we hope to do that again this year. It'll be the same thing. We start off with our longhorns that everyone loves. That's our signature thing with the parade. And afterwards, we'll have pictures and presents with Santa in the rodeo operie for the children. It's completely free. Everything's free unless they want to buy hot chocolate. And it's a fun thing that we moved up to November 29th. We usually have it the first weekend of December, but we're avoiding bedlam and bad weather. So hopefully, the holiday weekend will work out better for us.
All right, and that's a Saturday?
Yes.
Okay.
It'll be Saturday morning at 10:00 a.m.
A week from Saturday.
Mm-hmm.
Down in Stockyards.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you very much. And we'll get a motion in a second and see if we can get this one passed as well.
Thank you very much.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Thank you, Emily. All right, we'll recess the council meeting, convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. There are four items. All right, comments or questions about the MFA? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Adjourn the OC-MFA, convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority, just the claims and payroll today. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Adjourn the OCPPA, convene as the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust, where we have three items. All right, any comments or questions here on the EAT? Cast your votes then, and it passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OCEAT and reconvene the council meeting with a consent docket. All right, we have a motion and a second. Are there any individual considerations on a, what is a lengthy consent docket?
Mayor.
Yeah, Pete.
AJ and AF.
Okay. All right, Pete, go ahead and jump in with AJ.
AJ is a, it's the lease agreement with Riverfront Development Authority and to install and operate a temporary rail terminal at Northeast 10th and Sooner. There's been a lot of talk about the light rail between Oklahoma City and Tulsa, and this is really kind of the first, they did a trial run last, in the spring, and this is a more permanent arrangement. The concern is really, I think, on both ends of that line, and that is that we finally get, we get to bring it into Oklahoma City, and they get, and at the other end, to bring it into Tulsa, so that it can be a much more convenient operation rather than having to bus, they have to bus from Sepulpa on the north end, and we are on the east end, and we have to bus from 10th and Sooner to get people into Oklahoma City. It may work all right, but I think it's going to be a deterrent to a long-term solution. And there are solutions on this end that could bring the train on into, at least to Bricktown. So it would, and I think we ought to be thinking about that and working on it. I think that's going on in Tulsa, and I'd just like to encourage the company that's bringing it in and continue to encourage us to do something to try to make that a much more convenient operation. I think the cars have been delivered. They're pretty attractive-looking cars, and I just think it's something that we need to keep on the front burner to try to make it work.
There's going to be two, from February through the end of next year, two trains a day moving on that line. As you say, it doesn't quite get to downtown Oklahoma City, doesn't quite get to downtown Tulsa, so we have some work to do. If there is a way we can, you know, work with the railroad and get involved and figure out a way to get that closer into the Santa Fe hub, I think it really improve the experience. But as it is, there will be transportation on the end. You'll get onto a bus, which...
Yeah, there'll be, on both ends, people will be transported by bus to a more central location in Tulsa and in downtown Oklahoma City. I don't want to say, I don't want to sound like I'm being disparaging of the effort because it's a good idea. It's really a great idea, but it just could be much better if we could get those two end pieces working. So that's just, I just wanted to comment on it. The fact that the pictures of the cars were on the internet this week, and it looked pretty good, it's going to be an interesting operation. On the, on AF, this is a resolution approving an amended budgetary allocation to the completion of the Oklahoma City Community College Capitol Hill Project. This, this is going to be a significant opportunity for both Capitol Hill and for the college. The, it's, I thought about this morning, I was watching the news this morning, and Langston's had a commercial, and they have a, they run a commercial talking about how long they've been in Oklahoma City. And the very first picture on their commercial is a picture, picture of Langston's on 25th Street where this facility's going to go. And it just reminded me again of how important that's going to be. I think it may be the, it's, it's, it's the next step in doing a renovation to 25th Street, and I think it's, hopefully, it'll trigger a lot more better, different kinds of improvements to 25th Street because the architectural structure's there probably better than most of the areas that have already been revived. And it's just a really good project, and I'm looking forward to seeing it move along.
Yeah, so this is the Capitol project, Jim? We're going to be...
Yes.
Just kind of invest in the...
In their construction project for their, for their new facility.
And they're taking, gosh, construction must have been done...
Years and years ago.
In 30s or 40s or 50s and try to revitalize that area.
We do have a significant delegation from Oklahoma City Community College.
I noticed that today. It's, it's, the education is one aspect of it, but just the investment in those older, that old architecture is so badly needed. There's some, there's some great potential.
All right.
And I think this is, this is an incredible investment that's being made. Yeah, David?
Well, I'd just like to point out that the phones were coming from a TIF designed for downtown, and it just...
for downtown and it just goes to show how far-reaching that those TIF dollars are able to go. And this is going to have a tremendous impact on the Capitol Hill community. But more importantly, and I know any one of the gentlemen out there could speak better on this, this is going to help facilitate the reach of Oklahoma City Community College well into the community. And just like the library system, Oklahoma City Community College really does change people's lives. In this instance, it'll help with people needing some greater assistance on just some basic education issues as well as hopefully being the doorway into higher education. But it is so important that whenever we can expend public funds to help improve our citizens' lives, that we really take a serious look at that and try to do as much as we can to help elevate all of our citizens' knowledge, job skills. It just really does change people's lives. And I appreciate Dr. Seacrest, Jerry Stewart, and all the people involved at Oklahoma City Community College because they truly have their students' best interest in mind on every decision that they make.
Yeah. Meg?
Now, if I could, I was just going to take a minute to recognize Dr. Paul Seacrest. Paul has announced his retirement in July of 15 after an illustrious career at Oklahoma City Community College. And we appreciate everything you've done. I think this campus on 25th Street will provide a tremendous legacy along with that beautiful Performing Arts Theater that's activated almost every day, I think, Paul. The campus has really grown under your stewardship and we very much appreciate everything you've done.
Yeah, Paul claims to be 60 years old, but you look at him and you think that I-
I have just had a birthday, so I-
I still think there's some shenanigans going on there. I think he's got to be at least 10 years younger. Yeah, John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I echo the same comments as Councilman White and also Councilman Greenwell and also Councilwoman Sire. To add on, OKCCC has done something that I think sets the tone in our city and the work that they do in the underserved communities in our city, in my view, is outstanding. You take, for example, what they do with Oklahoma City Public Schools, that any graduating senior who wishes to attend their college, they can attend free, which I do believe that's outstanding. And I think the opportunities that it will present for the Capitol Hill area and the Hispanic community on the south side, I think will be outstanding. So, again, thank you, OKCCC.
Now, we need to increase participation in that program, you're right. Yeah, Pete?
Yeah, one, one other comment is that within, about a block and a half of this facility, the, the TIF money that's going into Capitol Hill Library, they're only about a block and a half apart. And they're really going to, I think, jumpstart what's going on. I have a meeting this afternoon with, with the library folks and the school people from Capitol Hill Elementary School, which has become an interesting relationship because you can go to Capitol Hill Library about 2:00 in the afternoon and it's just a regular library, not very many people there. And then about 2:30, when the kids get out of school at Lee, I mean, at Capitol Hill Elementary, you can't find a seat. And so, that's, that's really going to work out. Both of those projects together are really going to make a difference on 25th Street. I can tell you, we're, we're all excited about it.
Mayor, I think it's important to point out on TIF 2 and, and TIF 8 and, and some of the others, we've set aside monies for the taxing agencies. If you go back to the concept of, of TIF projects, these developments would not have happened without the TIF being in place. But for the TIF to be in place, the taxing agencies, the school district, the county, the city-county health, the library system and others had to give up part of their mill levy for a period of time to make that happen. And so, some of that money is set aside for specific development, but other of that money is put in, in, in specific funds to help those taxing agencies on, on some specific projects within those areas. So, it's really kind of a win-win as we go forward.
Good reminder. Anybody else?
Mayor, if I could pop back just for a quick second to AJ. I wanted to follow up on Pete's comments about the railroad. Manager, could we schedule a meeting? I think we've gotten the name of a couple of the contacts-
No.
-with the railroad. And if you wouldn't mind scheduling a meeting for us.
We're happy to do that. We talked about that last week and, and we will, we will be doing that. What Councilwoman is asking for is a meeting with, with the, the people with Iowa Pacific who will be running this and to talk about what we can do to help and what their, what their intentions are to better understand the service.
And I definitely would like to be included in on that meeting. And also, I echo the comments from Councilman White and also Councilwoman Sire.
All right, ready to vote the consent docket? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. And we're on to the concurrence docket. All right, any individual considerations here? Okay, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. On to item 9, these are items that require a separate vote. We'll start with a series of zoning cases. The first is in Ward 3 at 200 North McCormick Avenue. It's currently a simplified planned unit development and it would change to an I-3 heavy industrial district if approved. Larry?
Yes, has anybody signed up on this? This is going back to the original zoning on this particular piece of property. It was done into a spud about a year or so ago. That deal fell through and the owner has asked us to go back to I-3 zoning with no objection. And the Planning Commission approved unanimously. I move for approval.
All right. We're voting on item 9A1. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9A2 is a zoning case in Ward 5 at 812 Southwest 85th Street. It's currently O-2 General Office District and it would change to R-1. David, we have one person that has signed up.
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. Ms. Reese, would you like to join us up here and just give us a little bit of, of explanation as what you're trying to achieve is to downzone this and be able to build a, a home. Is that correct?
That's correct. Peggy Reese, 812 Southwest 85th. We bought about 2 and 1/2 acres of land 23 years ago and there are three lots left. The property was zoned O-2 when we purchased it, but at that time, the city had a grandfather clause that would allow us to build our house and our garage. And since then, we still have our house, which is just on the right on where it's boxed in. We still own 2 acres of property. And as my husband and I get older, it's hard for us to mow it and keep it up. And so, we actually have 2 lots to the west. And we would like to get our house legal now because the grandfather clauses, as you know, were taken away a few years ago. And so, we actually have 3 lots there. The one that our house is on is still O-2 and the other 2 lots are O-2. And we want all 3 of those lots to be zoned R-1. We do have a buyer for the 2 lots to the west and they're going to build a nice new home. And so, we were supposed to close this week, so we would hope that you would give us an emergency on that.
Thank you. And this was approved unanimously by the Planning Commission, so I recommend approval.
All right, we're voting on item 9A2. We have a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions from anyone?
Well, we have to vote on that second.
Yeah. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously.
Okay. And I would recommend that we approve the emergency.
Okay. Cast your votes. Passes 9-0.
Thank you.
Item 9A3 is a zoning case in Ward 3 at 11903 Southwest 26th Street. It's currently an R-MH1 Manufactured Mobile Home Subdivision District and a community unit plan overlay, and it would become an R-1 Single Family Residential District if approved. Larry?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Has anybody signed up on this? This was unanimously approved by the Planning Commission, unless the applicant wants to say something. This is a great project that will upgrade this area and I move for approval.
All right, we're voting on item 9A3. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 9A4 is a zoning case in Ward 7 at 7501 East Hefner Road. It's currently AA Agricultural and it would become an RA Single Family 1-Arour Rural Residential District. John?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Has anyone signed up? All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. This item was approved by Planning Commission. I recommend for approval. I move for approval.
All right, we're voting on item 9A5. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9A6 is a zoning case. Oh, you're right. That was item 9A4. Now to 9A5, which is also a zoning case in Ward 7 at 1400 East Memorial Road. It's currently R-1 Single Family Residential and it would become a new planned unit development. John, we're back on Ward 7.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Madam Clerk, I understand we do have someone who have signed up.
We do.
Can we hear from the applicant first and then the person who have signed up?
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Counsel. Chris Anderson with SMC Consulting Engineers representing the developer. Also have Mr. Dirk O'Hara and Mr. Kit Wakely with the development company that's doing this project. This is a PUD project on East Memorial Road. It's approximately 8 acres. So, it's a little east Broadway Extension. It is for a post-recovery care project with a rehabilitation building and also related medical office buildings. It was approved on September 25th unanimously by the Planning Commission and that will be happy to entertain any questions.
All right, thank you. Now, at Planning Commission, it helped my memory, there were protests at Planning Commission and the concerns were worked out with those protesters.
Yes, at the initial Planning Commission meeting, there were protesters that showed up and we continued that meeting. Had a neighborhood meeting at, at the neighborhood with the residents there, worked out some issues. The main concern was a wall that separated the residential project from, from our project. We agreed to an 8-foot nationary wall and also a 15-foot landscape buffer along that area. And that made the residents happy and worked things out, so.
All right, thank you. We hear from-
Yeah, or Kit Wakely?
Oh, okay, you're part of the applicant. Okay, thank you, thank you. And I, I just want to thank again the applicant for working with the surrounding neighborhood. Again, thank you. I move for approval.
All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. We're still in Ward 7 at 4225 Northeast 23rd Street. This zoning case is currently R-1 Single Family Residential and C-3 Community Commercial and it would become a new planned unit development if approved. John?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. When this item first came to me, it was a year ago, and originally, the owner wanted to turn the 50 acres into what I described as trash, trash, trash. I do want to thank the, the applicant for coming back with something that will definitely bring economic development into Ward 7. So, I do move for approval.
All right, are there any, anyone here hoping to speak on item 9A6 before we vote? All right, cast your votes.
And also, Mr. Mayor, I want the emergency on this. I move for the emergency.
All right, cast your votes. Passes 9-0.
Thank you.
And once again, in Ward 7 at 5709 Northeast 138th Street, it's currently CHC Highway Commercial District and it would become a new simplified planning and development. John?
All right, thank you. This item was approved by Planning Commission and the applicant has also asked for the emergency. I move for approval.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. I was just looking at the map here to see where that was. That's, is it on the other side of Edmund? Is that where that is?
Yes. Just a couple of hundred feet away from Edmund. On the other side of the service road is Edmund.
Okay. All right, ready to vote on item 9A7? Okay. All right, Francis is pointing out the easement has been submitted. I'm voting now and it passed unanimously.
Then I move for the emergency.
Okay, cast your votes and it passes 9-0. Item 9B is an ordinance that was recommended for denial at the Planning Commission. This is in Ward 5 at 16301 South Penn. David?
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. Johnson, would you like to make a presentation?
Yes, please. Good morning, Tim Johnson with Johnson &amp; Associates on behalf of the applicant. We, this was denied, recommended for denial by the Planning Commission. We have requested through the staff that the C-3 track be withdrawn from the application and we're going to come back with a PUD. But we would request that the R-1 portion be allowed to be approved. We have provided the easements to the staff for that.
Okay, thank you. And my understanding and visiting with staff is that the reason for the denial at the Planning Commission was focusing more on the commercial side and not necessarily on the residential side. Bob, could you provide any additional comments?
That's correct. The, the Planning Commission was concerned about C-3 at that location without, without a PUD to regulate the uses.
Yes, sir.
The R-1 zoning is consistent with the plan and the services are available, so.
Okay. Well, thank you. Well, then, based upon that information, I recommend approval of the R-1 section of this development.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We have a motion and a second to approve item 9B. Cast your votes. It passes 9-0.
Thank you.
Item 9C is a utility easement closure request and it's in Ward 8 at MacArthur and 164th Street. Pat, you okay with this?
I move to 7.
All right, we're voting on item 9C. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. And then item 9C2 has been continued until December 2nd. Item 9C3 would close a utility easement in Ward 3 at 9,001 Southwest 38th Street. Larry?
Yes, this is to close a utility easement. There were no protests at the Planning Commission. Anybody sign up to protest? This is to allow a house that was built on the easement to become legal. I move for approval.
All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9D is to us for a final hearing. This is, council's been approached by this and we've introduced it previously.
Has to do with utility theft.
All right, we're voting on item 9D. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. And item 9E is also to us for a final time and this would remove a couple of parking spaces on Coalcore Drive. All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9F is an item that's being introduced today. Has to do with our mechanical code. David Adcock is here?
David Adcock is here. And item, item 9F and 9G are updates to, F is the Mechanical Systems Code and, and G is Plumbing Code.
Okay.
Good morning. My name's David Adcock. We're here this morning to introduce 3 construction codes, in particular, 2 in relating to commercial buildings. Model codes are published by the International Code Council. They're in a, they're published in a 3-year cycle and they're the basis for the minimum construction standards of the state of Oklahoma. The Electrical Code is published separately by National Fire Protection Association and they're 1 year prior to the ICC codes. Currently, the state recognizes the 2009 additions of the International Building Code, International Plumbing Code, International Mechanical Code, and the International Fire And currently, the city has adopted the 2009 International Building Code, the 2000 International Plumbing Code, the 1996 International Mechanical Code, and the 2008 National Electrical Code. The Oklahoma City Plumbing and Mechanical Code Commissions have reviewed and recommend for adoption the 2009 additions of the International Plumbing Code, International Mechanical Code, and International Fuel Gas Code. And that will align the city with Oklahoma City to the minimum standards that's adopted by the state. Many of the proposed changes that, that we have were made for the purpose of reorganization, reorganizing our city ordinances so that all the building-related ordinance, that the titles and numbering will parallel each other. The Oklahoma City, one of the changes here is the Oklahoma- The Oklahoma City, one of the changes here is the Oklahoma City Boiler Licensing Requirements have been modified to accept the Oklahoma State Boiler Licensing, eliminating the need to provide boiler operator and contractor examinations that we do now. Also, there's new code language that requires locking-type tamper-resistant caps on refrigerant access ports. This is an effort to eliminate accessing the refrigerant for the purpose of inhalant abuse, which has become a problem. Following the adoption of these codes, our plan is to stay more current with codes as they are adopted at the state level. The Oklahoma City Electrical Code Commission is beginning to review now the 2014 Electrical Code, and we expect the 2015 edition of the ICC codes, as listed previously, to be adopted by the state late next year, and the separate Oklahoma City Code Commissions will begin reviewing those 2015 codes for adoption. Is there any questions or anything you have about the codes?
He's asking for questions on the mechanical code that's being introduced today.
You kind of hit on there that of making it staying more current?
Yes.
What is the reason why we're just now adopting the 2009?
I can't answer to a certain distance back, but more recently, we've been working on these for probably the last two years, and we've been meeting... One of the things that we've started in the Development Center is meeting with our contractors' organizations. Now we have two meetings a year that are scheduled with each one of those organizations. We started this in September 2013, let them know what is coming in these code adoptions. Makes it easier for them and for us to regulate those codes. But then we have code commissions that actually review those codes, and the state actually... When was that? I think 2011, started the Oklahoma Uniform Building Code Commission, and now they are reviewing the codes at the state level. So, and they have become, since then, they have become the minimum building standards for the state. So we have to kind of see what the state's doing for those minimum standards for our code commissions then to review them. Now, you know, that's speaking to most recently. Further back, I can't answer that, but I will say that our plan is to have our code commissions up with the review of the new codes more in line with the state that will be adopting them as they come out.
David, I think you answered my question, but we have two different sets of folks that review these for us. We have a commission for each one of the trades essentially, but you also are getting citizen input via contractors and mechanical folks.
Yes, we do. We have open meetings with our contractors. Like I said, we started this in September 2013. We have three a month in September and three a month in March, and we meet with those separate contracting organizations, depending on what trade it is. So we have a night designated for each trade.
Great. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Quick question. On the changes in the code, will they act cost during business?
Very little in this code cycle change. Like these, one of the things I mentioned was the locking caps on refrigerant lines. I mean, we're talking $5 to $15. You know, they're so minimal that it was really hard to quantify any real cost.
Thank you.
All right. How about a motion then on item 9F? Item being introduced today. All right. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously, and there'll be a public hearing on December 2, and council is set for final adoption on December 16. And next up, the Plumbing Code. Or is that both?
That was both, but we need separate motions.
Yeah, we do need another... Let's go ahead and I need a motion on item 9G. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously, and that is also set for public hearing on December 2 with final adoption scheduled for December 16. All right. 9H is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 9H? All right. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 9I is a public hearing regarding a dilapidated structure in the Historic Preservation District, and there was a lot of comments from the HP Commission. Ed, you have any comments on this?
Has anybody signed in Ward 2? I'd move forward, move for approval.
All right. We're voting on item 9I. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9J is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 9J? All right. How about a motion? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9K is a resolution that would rename Ross Park into Belle Isle Park. And this is in Ward 2.
Did you want to speak?
Doug Cupper is here.
Thank you, Mayor. City Council Doug Cupper. The Belle Isle neighborhood, there's three neighborhoods over there that surround Ross Park. They've done a lot of work in that park. They have adopted it. They do a lot of maintenance. They've planted trees and things along those lines. They came to the Board of Park Commissioners recommending that the Ross Park be renamed and more in line with the community that they live in, and the Board of Park Commissioners have recommended that the name of Ross Park be changed to Belle Isle Park. The research showed that Ross Park was named for a street in days of old. There is no person associated with this, so it's in keeping with the ordinances that relates to renaming parks.
I move for approval.
All right. We're voting on item 9K. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. 9L is also a resolution to name a new sports complex that people have no doubt seen under construction over at Woodson Park for quite some time, and the new name would be the Wendell Wizenhut Sports Complex in honor of former Oklahoma City Parks and Recreation Director Wendell Wizenhut. I noticed Wendell's in the room, probably with mixed emotions about this vote that's coming up here. Any comments from council before we vote? I will just say that, you know, the city has a, you know, significant history about honoring our former Parks Commissioners with some sort of presence in the city. You have to go to Pat Murphy, Alvin Egling, and I'm probably missing a handful more, but I think, you know, those of us in the horseshoe know how important Wendell's input has been here through good times and bad times, and through good budget years and bad budget years. I thought Wendell did an incredible job of keeping us afloat in bad times and then really investing wisely when the proceeds were there. The city's going to be better off from here on because of Wendell's work, and I think it's very appropriate, and I would urge the council to vote for it. All right. We're voting on item 9L. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously.
Wendell, want to come?
Yeah. Wendell, you will come up. Invite us to your park.
I just want to say that it was my greatest pleasure to be a part of growing the park system in Oklahoma City. It was an opportunity that I relished. I really did, Council President, really relished that opportunity. And I also want to let you know that it was a great thing working with the city staff, with the Parks and Recreation Staff, but with the staff of the entire city to make these things happen. I never got anything but cooperation from the entire staff, and that was a great thing to remember. There's really no higher honor, no greater honor for a Parks and Recreation Director than to have a facility that he or she had an impact on building. So I very much do appreciate the Board of Park Commissioners' recommendation and the council's vote very much, very much. Thank you.
Well, and like a lot of cities, we have been struggling to build enough soccer fields, and this park complex is going to take a big step toward addressing the need.
It's perfectly placed for great usage, lots of soccer fields, and we need to continue to do that, of course. It would really help, but soccer continues to grow and we'll need more fields.
When does the Wendell Wizenhut Sports Complex open?
This spring.
All right. And I urge people to sign up and participate. It's going to be great. Can't wait to be there.
Thank you very much.
Wendell, congratulations, and thanks for your service. Item 9M, I understand we do not need executive session, so just look for a resolution to pass it. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Likewise, on item 9N, I understand we do not need executive session, and just look for a resolution, a motion to pass the resolution. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. And once again, item 9O, I understand we do not need executive session, just look for a motion to pass the resolution. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9P, I understand we do need executive session, so why don't we have a motion to move item 9P into executive session when appropriate? Cast your votes, and that item moves to executive session. And then item 9Q, I understand we do not need executive session, so how about a motion to...
Strike. Yes.
Okay. Move to strike. And on item 9Q, cast your votes. That item is struck from the agenda. And same with R, a motion to strike would be appropriate. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9S is Claims Recommended for Denial. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 9S? All right. How about a motion? Cast your votes, and those claims are denied. And then item 10 is Claims Recommended for Approval. Did anyone come down to speak about any item listed under Claims Recommended for Approval? All right. How about a motion then to approve those claim payments? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Then item 11 is Items from Council, and we'll start with Councilman Swites's request on behalf of several other council people and myself to move to the same schedule next year that we've had this year about scheduling council meetings. Pete, anything you want to say about this? We vote this time, it moves into the books. Last time, we just introduced it.
Right. Yes, I just move approval. I think the council's in support of it. The majority is.
All right. Is there a motion? All right. Cast your votes. And it passed unanimously.
Let me add one thing. Next year, when this comes up, can this be added to the...
Yes.
So we don't have to do it twice?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Items from council. James, you have anything? Ed? Larry?
I'd just like to thank the residents of Farm Valley, which is a neighborhood south of Mustang and west of Mustang Road for their neighborhood meeting last night, and it was very gratifying, the enthusiasm that these folks had in far southwestern Oklahoma City for the MAPS projects and the progress that had been made there, so.
What is the density south of Mustang?
Very, very sparse.
Okay.
To nonexistent.
When you said neighborhood meeting, it had made me wonder if there were some developments that I've heard of.
There are three developments primarily in the Farm Valley area, 1, 2, and 3, and that's the major development south of Mustang right there.
Okay.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Sure. Pete?
Nothing.
All right. David? Meg? John? Pat?
Your microphone. Quick request, City Manager, mind people once again, they're driving a vehicle that's identified as a Oklahoma vehicle regardless of what kind it is, they adhere to traffic, religiously adhere to traffic, warning, sign, construction, because to a lot of people, that's the only impression they have of Oklahoma. They see our people violating the law, it's sort of crazy, I mean, respect for law.
Okay.
Couldn't agree more. We sent out reminders to drivers, and we'd be happy to do so again.
We should probably also take note of the temporary closing on Shields. You want to explain what's going on there and how long it'll be that way?
Sure. Shields was shut down yesterday to accommodate the reconstruction or the construction of the bridge over the boulevard that... So the road has to be closed for a period of time for utility relocations and for the construction of the bridge. It was closed Monday, and it will be closed toward, to the end of 15, so it's going to be closed for quite a while. And so what we're doing is actually, it's a major construction project, there's got to be a few fly around and actually have the construction of that bridge to accommodate the roadway through there.
And we'll be going underneath?
That's correct.
Railroad track.
That's correct.
Construction on Shields. Okay. Well, people will get used to it, I guess, after a while. Seems like a long time. City Manager Reports, Presentation on Downtown in December?
Jane Jenkins is here this morning.
Good morning, Mayor, and members of the City Council. I'm here to give you an update on what's going to be happening in downtown Oklahoma City for the holidays. Downtown in December, as you know, is a collection of events and attractions that runs basically through November, from November 14 to January the 4th, and we market it under the umbrella of Downtown in December. About three years ago, Devon came in as a presenting sponsor, and we were really able with that help to do a lot more. The first thing, of course, is the Devon Ice Rink, now in a permanent location in the Marriott Gardens. It's fourth season there. It's open seven days a week. You can get a full schedule at downtownindecember.com, and the rates are $12 a person for all ages and will include your skates, or you can skate for $8 if you bring your own skates. Another big event is Devon Saturdays with Santa. This is something that has really blown to gargantuan proportions from when we started it, and it's just a fabulous event for families. Santa comes to the Rotunda at Devon Energy every Saturday, November 29, from December 20, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. You can write letters to the, well, your children, I suppose you can too, write letters to the North Pole, create holiday crafts, and enjoy holiday musical entertainment. And then something that we instigated last year and seemed to work fairly well, we're working the bugs out, is that you can register when you arrive at Downtown in December at Saturdays with Santa, and then you can enjoy all of the activities, and they will text you when it's time for you to come up and meet Santa, because we were having such long lines for people to standing in line to meet Santa, so this way everyone can enjoy everything. This event has gotten so large that we are actually closing Sheridan, the Saturdays during Saturdays with Santa, and there will be a little train that will be taking you between Devon and the Marriott Gardens and just another added attraction, so it won't seem like you have to wait so long to visit with Santa Claus. So it's going to be really great this year. Another big event is the Chesapeake Snow Tubing, once again, at the Chickasaw-Bricktown Ballpark. This year, we're doing things a little bit differently. It will actually open to the public December 13 after kids are out of school will be when all of our public sessions are. And again, $12 will get you an hour and a half of snow tubing, just like it's been in the past. You can purchase tickets at the ballpark ticket office or again at downtownindecember.com, which is where we have all our information about Downtown in December. Another favorite Christmas tradition is the Sandridge Tree Lighting Festival. It's always the Friday after Thanksgiving from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. It will be live music, food, and fun. The Christmas tree will be lit by Mayor Cornet. We will have cookies from Nonna's, popcorn from Harkins, and Katy Bug's Hot Cocoa Food Truck will be there. Santa will be at the festivities to greet everyone, and it's just really become a fun event. We've moved the tree over to the plaza on the ballpark side of Mickey Mantle, which gives everybody an opportunity to gather around the tree, and it just feels really, really close. Another favorite event is the Sandridge Santa Run, and this year it will be Saturday, December 13 at 9:00 a.m. at Leadership Square. It's a 5K race, a one-mile fun run, and a kid's stash. There's lots of indoor activities for children, spaghetti eddy, coloring station. Again, you can register at downtownindecember.com. And the thing that's really fun about this run is that there's a costume contest with cash prizes for the registered 5K runners, so it's always fun to see what creative costumes will show up at Leadership Square. Even if you're not running, it's a fun morning to be downtown at 9:00 and have coffee and watch all the costumes. Again, we're doing free holiday boat rides at the water taxi. One Main Financial, once again, sponsored the lights on the Bricktown Canal, and they did some extra stuff this year, and it's looked so beautiful, and the free boat rides will be Thursday through Sunday evenings, November 28 through December 28, from 6:00 until 9:30 p.m. We will be closed Thanksgiving Day and Christmas Day, and this year, we're going to load the boats just west of Oklahoma Avenue beneath, kind of under ZIOs is where the loading will be for the free water taxi rides. But this is always a very popular event. They fill the boats up almost every single trip, and it seems to do well regardless of weather. Even if it's cold, people seem to like riding the canal boats and seeing the lights. And speaking of lights, another holiday favorite is the Automobile Alley Lights on Broadway. This is where we put lights and curtains, curtain-type lights on the buildings on Broadway, and really with the neon signs that are there, it creates a really magical effect, and again, people really like to see this. This year, in fact, it's this week, we have Shop Hop, which will be our kind of kickoff to shopping on Automobile Alley. We've really increased the retail on Broadway in the past year. And so we're trying to encourage people to do more shopping, and the lights will help that. Deluxe Winter Market, which went under the Downtown in December umbrella last year, was at the Chevy, Chevy Event Center in Bricktown last year. But this year, it's moving to Leadership Square, and I think this is so exciting. It's Saturday and Sunday, November 29th and 30th, from 10:00 to 6:00. And you'll have more than 60 vendors featuring crafts, a lot of Made in Oklahoma items. This is one of the holiday's best shopping events, and we're so excited to have it in the center of downtown this year and in a new and exciting venue. And then another thing was Sonic Segway Santa. Sonic sponsors Santa on a Segway rolling around downtown. Santa will have giveaways, including Sonic gift cards, and this year, we're going to have a few Santa is Coming to Oklahoma books for kids that some lucky children will receive from Segway Santa. And again, you can follow Downtown OKC on Twitter to discover where Sonic Segway Santa will be. We'll try to track him, and so people can, can try to find him too. He'll be at all the events. An event we started three years ago, Continental Free Movie Mondays. This has just been a phenomenally popular event. It's at Harkins Theater in Bricktown. We show a Christmas movie every Monday during the holiday season. Monday, December 8th at 7:00 p.m., the movie is Elf. You have to register online at downtownindecember.com, starting December 25th, for that movie. And then every week, it's a week out, and we sell out of these free tickets every single time. So Continental is happy, Harkins is happy, and again, it's a great family way to see some Christmas movies, some of your favorite Christmas movies on the big screen in Bricktown. An event that we added last year is Little Willie's Triple Dog Dare. It's a stair climbing event. I'll challenge anyone to, I will really respect you if you do this. You climb flights of stairs at Leadership Square, which is 22 floors, Oklahoma Tower, which is 31 floors, and then the Leadership Square South Tower is 16 floors. Thus, the Triple Dog Dare. You can do one, two, or all three of those stair climbing events. And this will be Saturday, December 6th. And again, this is a great thing to see downtown, to watch these athletes doing this stair climbing downtown. Something that was brought to us by our friend Mark Beffert, so we really have enjoyed that one. Santa's Adventures on the Oklahoma River, of course, the, we've talked a lot about the river today at this council meeting, but the holidays at the Boathouse District will begin November 28th through January 4th. There is the North Pole Climb, the Sandridge Santa Zip, Rumble Drop, Snow Bounce, Candy Cane Rock Wall, Rudolph's Launch, and more. And again, it can be, it was with a pass to the, to the river, the River District, a $35 all-day pass for all ages to experience the fun on, on the river during the holidays. And another shopping event, because shopping is so important to our city during this time of year, are the Holiday Pop-Up Shops. They will begin Thursday, November 28th through December 21st. This year, they're located in Midtown at 10th and Hudson, next to the Blue Garden Food Truck Park. There will be 38 rotating shops, plus an urban Christmas tree lot. Now, this, to get information, you can go to okcpopups.com. What I really love about this event is every weekend, the vendors change. So you need to go to this event every weekend if you want to catch all of the opportunities. They're all local businesses. Some of them have bricks and mortar stores in Oklahoma City. Some of them are only pop-ups, but it's a great way to do some Christmas shopping, buy your Christmas tree. And the igloos really do, really do give the impact of the, of the holiday season. And it'll be very visible this year, I think, at 10th and Hudson. There are other Downtown in December events. First of all, the winter shops will also be back at the Marriott Gardens this year. Those are the little chalets, similar to what you might see in Bryant Park in New York, that are managed by Prodigal. And along with that, Prodigal has added a carousel, so you can ride the carousel for a dollar and shop at these shops. This is great for Saturdays with Santa, because we have so many people down there. And again, you register for Saturdays with Santa, and then you can go do all kinds of other things, and there's just more for you to do downtown until you get a text telling you it's time to go see Santa. We will have a Film Row Holiday Party on December 17th. Of course, the Nutcracker is a Christmas tradition for many Oklahoma City families. The Christmas Show with the Philharmonic is also a Christmas tradition. Lyric has A Christmas Carol. Opening night will be December 31st. And then the, there's hockey games, and the Skirvin is also hosting some holiday events this year. So you can get all the information that you ever wanted to get at our website at downtownindecember.com. Of course, I'm always available if you want to email me if you have any specific questions, or if there's anything that I can help to make your holiday experience in downtown Oklahoma City better. We really appreciate all your support. This is the biggest thing that we do all year, and it's always a lot of fun. So, thank you.
We appreciate you and your staff. Jane, any comments or questions from council?
Just that it's stunning. I mean, I think back to a couple of years ago, as we got started with this, the idea, you know, was really just to knit together a couple of the things that were already happening in downtown. And Jane, your staff has taken it to such another level by creating all these events, bringing in downtown sponsors. I just, I can't imagine that anybody would come down and not be able to find just tons of things to do with their families.
Well, thank you, and I just want to note that the Downtown in December umbrella encompasses a lot of things, like I said, with the Nutcracker and the Phil, things that we don't actually produce, but we promote under our marketing brand, so that we try to, to give the idea that there's so much every holiday event in downtown over the course of, from Thanksgiving to New Year's is there. The Marriott Gardens, of course, does a lot of their own programming, but we're happy to promote all of the activities and things that they're doing there as part of our Downtown in December.
You did remind me that if, at the Devon Skating Rink, if you're a member of the Marriott Gardens, I think the cost is only $8 rather than 12, so-
Oh, great.
-encourage people to join the Marriott Gardens.
And you don't have to bring your own skates.
And you don't have to bring your own skates.
Yes. It's a good time to join the Marriott Gardens Foundation.
Jane, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up?
Next up is a report on the, on the lethality assessment protocol for domestic violence, and Chief Johnny Coleman's here.
Good morning. This morning, I'd like to introduce Captain Kim Flowers. She's going to make the presentation. She supervises the robbery and domestic violence units, and she's been involved in this study since the very beginning and has spearheaded our efforts on behalf of the Police Department, so.
Good morning. How are you all doing this morning? I'm very honored to be here to share with you the adventures that we've had for the last five years on the Oklahoma Lethality Protocol Assessment, or that we refer to as OKLAP, a Police Advocate Collaborative Response to Domestic Violence. Our study began in 2019, I'm sorry, February 19th of 2009. That was Phase 1 of the comparison phase, where officers received lethality training and encouraged our victims to participate in the DV research study. That study lasted a little bit longer than the researchers thought it would, because it took a while to make, the contacting the victims was difficult. So it extended the study much longer than they thought it would happen. Phase 2, 19 months later, was the treatment phase. Officers received online training on how to conduct the LAP for decreasing domestic violence, and also use the hotline when appropriate. Once the study was complete in 2013, the findings, we found that we completed 3,133 lethality assessments. 80% were from Oklahoma City Police Department, because we had six others, law enforcement agencies in the state who also participated. 1,566 hotline calls resulting from the study, and that would be the Y. Oklahoma City Police Department recognized the importance of the LAP and continued involvement in the program after the study was completed and implemented procedures, and made the assessment mandatory. The Oklahoma Lethality Assessment Protocol basically consists of when an officer responds to an intimate partner relation domestic call, he will offer the lethality assessment to the victim. If she requests, if she will participate in the study, if she's willing to participate in the study, the officer will then complete the screening. And if she would like to talk to the Y after it's over, she can do so. A lot of times on the assessment, it scores their level of threat, from high to medium to low. And normally, I believe, on every assessment in the study, the victim scored at high risk. So, you know, we have a definite problem in our state, and that's why we participated in this. Again, once the form is completed, the officer asks the victim if she'd like to talk to the advocate on the hotline. If she does, the officer will then make the telephone call and advise the advocate how the victim scored, and what her score was, and some of the responses she might have made of, made when, when he asks the questions. And then the victim would get on the phone and do safety planning. And this is right at the scene of a domestic. And do immediate safety planning with her at that, at that point, instead of waiting for a day or two later. During the last year legislative session, Oklahoma City Representative Kay Floyd learned of the LAP risk assessments through our Oklahoma City LAP, and solicited our help in developing legislation statewide to require all officers in the state of Oklahoma to complete the LAP. This amended the Victims' Rights Bill for police officers to ask 11 lethality assessment questions at the scene of a domestic violence call. Collaborant, or collaboration and advocate agencies, or call them, I'm sorry, when appropriate. This went into effect on November 1st, 2004, 14, and Oklahoma is the first in the U.S. to legislate domestic violence LAP. CBS News coverage highlighted the Oklahoma City LAP process by riding with Officer Brandy May at Will Rogers, as she responded to domestic violence calls in Oklahoma City. The segment was shown nationally on October 31st of this year, and I'd like to share that with you right now. In, in Brandy's credit, she, the photographer that rode with her, it took six days to get coverage on this. So she was very patient.
Investors today are looking for opportunities. ...in the market. One of the themes I like is Japan. It's one of the cheapest markets in the developed world to invest in, and the earnings of the companies-
Commercial from BlackRock in the middle of them. By the way, I happened to see this story here on CBS News-
Did you see it?
Yeah, it was, as you'll see, it, I think it really shows us in a good light to take on tough issues.
Very positive.
Have been having positive surprises. iShares has a Japan fund that tickers EWJ. It gives you broad access to large and mid-sized companies-
Call 1-800-iShares to request a perspective, which includes investment objectives, risks, fees, expenses, and other information that you should read and consider carefully before investing. Investing involves risk, including possible risks.
When we heard about a new police strategy for fighting domestic violence, we wanted to know more, especially when we found out that in Maryland, fatalities had dropped by 30% when they started using it. The strategy requires nothing more than a pencil and paper. Here's Anna. When we heard about a new police strategy for fighting domestic violence, we wanted to know more, especially when we found out that in Maryland, fatalities have dropped by 30% when they started using it. The strategy requires nothing more than a pencil and paper. Here's Anna Werner.
Oklahoma City Police Officer Brandy May answers domestic violence calls like this one nearly every day.
I want to ask you some questions, so you can answer yes, no, or you can choose not to answer at all, okay?
But now she has a new tool. One police hearsay is simple but effective. It's a checklist of 16 questions.
Does Shane have an alcohol or substance abuse problem?
Designed to help officers identify victims who are likely to be killed.
Do you think that Shane might try to kill you?
The more times a victim answers yes, the more likely domestic violence may lead to her death.
If he said he was going to kill me, he says it every time, but I just thought it was an empty threat. And tonight, it made me believe that he would.
So in four years, you've seen eight women killed?
Mm-hmm.
Captain Kim Flowers heads the domestic violence unit, which has been using the checklist for three years.
A lot of them cry and say, oh my God, I can't, I can't believe I'm letting this happen.
So they start to process it through the checklist?
Right, exactly.
The questions were developed by a researcher at Johns Hopkins University. For example, number five, has he ever tried to choke you? Research found men who choked their partners were 10 times more likely to eventually kill them.
He wants you to know that he's in control, and he can snap your neck in half whenever he feels like it.
So what we're going to do now is I'm going to call the hotline.
Officer May found this woman was in serious danger.
Do you just want to speak with him, or would you like to seek shelter?
So she took the next step in the new protocol by putting her on the phone with the domestic violence hotline right there at the scene.
It offers them support. It makes them feel stronger. It gives them the opportunity to take back a hold of their life.
This victim told us it made a difference for her.
Didn't know, you know what I mean? I just thought this was normal. And it's not. It's not normal. And it's not okay.
Statewide use of the checklist starts Saturday in Oklahoma. 16 questions that might save lives. Anna Werner, CBS News, Oklahoma City.
One thing I would like to share, the one victim that we heard on the video just a minute ago, if you could notice in her voice, she was choked. And the two cases that the photojournalist from CBS that rode with Brandy, both victims sought shelter after they used the telephone that evening. So it's a great tool. We've been partnering with the Attorney General's Office, providing training throughout the state right now for the other smaller agencies who do not have resources. So, anyway, that's all I have. Unless you all have any questions?
Well, Kim, what can we do? Is there anything the council and I can do to continue to support this program? Or a next step you'd like to see us go?
Well, we're really working hard, I think, collaborating with our advocates in the state. And like I said, we've been number three for the last two years in homicides with intimate partner domestics. And we're really trying very hard to get the education out there and the word that there is help. And by the immediacy of providing this assistance on a call, I think is, is huge. As a matter of fact, we have been bombarded with requests. As a matter of fact, I got a call from a chief in South Carolina. He said, you know what, we're number second on the list. Can you send us whatever you have? So, you know, it's a national problem, and I think as a city, we're working really hard to address it with all our partners.
Are there funding gaps that you see in the, in the different layers? This, obviously, is a very complicated layered approach.
Well, domestic violence is a very difficult crime to attack, you know, with all the different aspects of it. But, you know, we're working really hard with Y, and I don't know, Chief, do, what do you think?
Right now, we're in pretty good shape, because we've implemented these programs, and we have made it a priority. And I think that's the key, is to make domestic violence a priority. You've got to start there. And then once you do there and start devoting the resources, that's what you've got to do to start impacting the problem.
Are, are we spending adequate time in the recruitment process in, in training the next generation of police officers to be more sensitive to domestic violence?
Absolutely. And it's evolved over the years since we've all started. But right now, they're receiving all this training right now in the academy, so they'll be armed with this when they hit the streets.
Okay.
It's, it's an absolutely wonderful program, and it's just a tragedy that this is another one of the lists where Oklahoma rises to the top. I so appreciate the collaboration with the Y. They're doing such great work at their shelter. They're just about to do the ribbon cutting for the second housing facility. I mean, the shelter at the Y is at 102% capacity 100% of the time, I think. We just don't have enough places for people to, to seek shelter. We know how hard it is for women to be courageous enough. And I think, I want to say men too. Women aren't the only folks that are sometimes subjected to domestic violence.
I think there were 5%, there were 5% of the men- I think there are 5%, 5% of the men, there were 5% of the men in the study, 95% were women.
So there just isn't enough access to safe places for them to go, and I think the numbers, Kim, you can correct me, but it takes seven times for a woman to.
Yes, ma'am.
Typically be brave enough to finally leave a violent situation.
And there, there is a, Christie Mitchell from the Y has a, a video of a victim who said, if it wasn't for that officer who returned to her house several times and believed in her, that she wouldn't have left, and she probably would have, she probably wouldn't be with us right now. So, they're finding, though, through this study, they found that 95% of the victims that they spoke to have been strangled. So that's kind of the new thing, I guess you would call, where men who have become very acute at domestic violence are strangling women without leaving any marks or injuries on, around their neck, and it, it can be deadly without seeking medical treatment. So we're, we're working really hard with the officers in identifying that, too.
Thank you for your great work.
Kim, thanks for your work. Yeah, Ed?
Just a question. What, what percent of the homicides would, would substance abuse be involved, or addiction?
We have that as one of our questions. It's not one of the 11 that are state mandated, but on our assessment, we have that listed, that if there is alcohol or drugs involved, and what kind, but I think we find probably a high percentage of our calls are alcohol-related with domestic violence.
So it seems that maybe a way to indirectly, I mean, for the council, maybe, is, is to give support to substance abuse services, and some, time to time, we have zoning issues, and that, to me, seems to be highly, highly correlated, is substance abuse and addiction issues.
The medical field's really looking at this study also, as far as when you have victims who come into the ER, who are injured and who do not want to call the police. So they're looking at that pretty hard, too, so.
Great, thanks.
Right. Yeah, Pete?
I, I, I think I, we need to compliment Senator Floyd also for taking the ball and running with it. It's not, we, as, some of you probably heard me complain about the lack of support that we received from the legislature on a number of issues, but this is an issue where somebody took the problem and really got after it, and, and we owe her a debt of gratitude for that also, because that, that doesn't happen nearly often enough, and I think we need to point it out when it does happen, when we have a legislator that really takes a, takes a...
I know the researchers were a little shocked, they didn't think they'd move quite that fast, but...
Right. No. I just, I just don't think we ought to let it go without complimenting her on doing this.
She's great. She was awesome to work with.
Great. All right. Kim, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Johnny.
That's it?
All right. Citizens to be heard. Now's your chance. All right. We have executive session, we'll be back.